Good evening. I'd like to call together the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you for joining us tonight. We have two agenda items on our calendar tonight. And item number one is Community Partners Grant Program Committee Recommendations. Item number two is a sales tax extension follow-up survey results. I'd like to start our meeting as we do most of our meetings with public comment. If there's any public members of the public who'd like to speak on either one of these agenda items, number one or two, now is your opportunity to do so. I don't believe I have anybody signed up to speak. But if you are here in City Hall and would like to speak, you may do so now by coming to the podium. If you're joining us online and would like to speak to council on either of these items, please raise your hand and we'll bring you into the meeting. So I'll give it just a moment to see if anyone raises their hands.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Check with our clerk and it doesn't look like anybody's coming forward or raising their hands. So we will move beyond our public's right to speak and go to agenda item number one. This is the Community Partners Grant Program Committee Recommendations. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. Mary Ann Schilling, our Assistant City Manager, is here to introduce it. We have a few of our committee members. Mary Ann?
Hello, good evening. I'm Mary Ann Schilling, Assistant City Manager, and I'm joined here tonight by Geneva Fox and Alex Goldsmith, our Community Partner Grant Program Committee. Tonight, they will be sharing the recommendations from the committee this year. We saw a big increase this year. We had six new, we had six new agencies apply this year and over a hundred thousand dollars in new asks. So it's exciting that this, this program is, is getting some press. People are excited to apply. And so we have our committee members here to share their recommendations with you all. So I'll send it your way.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Geneva Fox, as Mary Ann said, and this is Alex Goldsmith. We had the privilege to serve on this year's Community Partners Grant Program Committee along with Brooke Allison, Diana Lopez, Jerry DeTulio, Dan Gravy, and Steph Tanner. Through four evenings of presentations on Zoom, we heard from twenty-six local nonprofits seeking funds from the city of Wheat Ridge for two thousand and twenty-four. Six of these organizations were new this year. For a net increase of three, collectively two hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred thirty dollars were requested, and we renewed as a committee, which was an increase of a hundred and one thousand, seven hundred dollars from the previous year. Each organization was assessed on the same factors: identified community need, estimated number of Wheat Ridge residents served in a year, the programs' benefit to the quality of life for Wheat Ridge residents, how the programs benefited the health. All right, so quality of life for Wheat Ridge residents, as well as the health, safety, and welfare of those residents. And then lastly, how each program measures performance. I really enjoyed the opportunity to be on this committee. It was great to hear of the impacts of these organizations on our city and neighbors, including some new programs to come. Thank you for allowing us to serve in this way. I'll hand it over now to Alex to share a bit more about the organizations and our committee's recommendations.
I also want to thank you for creating this opportunity. This committee is an incredible way to be able to better know the city and the resources that support the city and its citizens. This allowed me to better understand the community as well, being a newer citizen of Wheat Ridge. I found myself impressed by the number of resources and support these organizations provide to our underprivileged youths. I would like to highlight a few of these organizations that I'm really proud of supporting. CASA is an incredible resource that could always use more support. Hearing about the services that they provide to vulnerable children is amazing. Jefferson Center for Mental Health offers necessary mental health services for our elementary students. This grant allows them to service the increase in demand due to combinations of schools across the city. Colorado Youth for a Change provides tutoring services for our elementary students. The pandemic greatly hindered some of these students' educational progress. The money our city provides through this committee enables one-on-one sessions with these students to ensure they can catch up to the rest of their peers. And Wheat Ridge's high school STEM program is absolutely incredible. I did not grow up in Wheat Ridge, but listening to these students present their accomplishments over the past year was inspiring. It made me wish I could be a high schooler again, only to participate in the STEM program. And now we'll open it up to any questions that you might have about our recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to questions from council. Counselor Weaver.
Just wanted to thank the committee for all of their hard work towards this because it did really appreciate just spending the time to look at all of these agencies and, and what a fun job, right, to, to give out money. And, but thank you for all of your work towards it. I really appreciate the recommendations.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the committee for dedicating your time and volunteering for this effort. It's a great way to provide funds to organizations within our community, so we appreciate you taking this on. I did have a question in regard to just the Jefferson Center for Mental Health. So last year, we decided to fund them at a higher level than what they had asked for, and this year, they're receiving a pretty significant amount, not quite what they asked for, but much higher than last year's. I just, so could you maybe give us an idea of the discussion around that? And if there were any specifics as to what they said that they were going to cover with the additional funds this year?
Yeah, absolutely. So when they presented, they were looking for the adequate funds to be able to help support a full service in the elementary school. We were trying our best to be able to balance allocation across the board. We all submitted our allocations anonymously and then tried to balance it as best as we could to be able to reach a number that made sense for us. While Jefferson Center for Mental Health offers an incredible service, there was only so much money that we could really pass around, and we really did want to fund it as much as possible. We did, I'm pretty sure, close to eighty percent, and that was a big goal of ours, to be able to help reach that specific budget. They did mention that there were other funds that could help them get to the rest of the way for the service as well. And so we just wanted to make sure we could do as much as we could, but be able to also provide as many resources to the rest of the organizations that were applying as well.
And I'll add to that, just because these committee members are new this year, that the difference between this year and last year is that last year was for a part-time, a half-time FTE counselor at Colerstone Elementary. This is very full-time counselor at the school.
And sorry, just as a follow-up question to that, were there any organizations that you felt weren't funded to the capacity that the committee would have liked to because of allocations, either to Jefferson Center for Mental Health or others, that maybe we need to take into consideration?
Yeah, there were plenty of organizations that we would have loved to fund them fully. We really tried to use last year's funding as a benchmark of where to start for all these organizations that reapplied. Using that benchmark did allow us to be able to help allocate money evenly across the board, and we really did want to be able to provide more money to any mental health services, any services that add resources for underprivileged youths. Those were main concerns, at least mine. There are also multiple resources and organizations that here are based in Wheat Ridge that are just starting up, that we would have loved to give more money to, and if there was more money, I'm sure we would find places to put it easily.
Thank you. Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank you guys as well. This is a great list of, of recommendations, and I think you've done a great job, and you can see your specific focuses on, on certain things, mental health, our youth, things like that, that really stands out, which I think is important as, as we move forward as the city. I, I kind of picture the movie, I don't know if you ever saw the movie Twelve Angry Men, and I know there were twelve angry men in the room, but like, how do you go from the recommendations that, or the, the asks from everybody and then whittle it down, or in some cases go up and, and decide how much they get? Like, what's that process kind of look like for you guys?
Yeah, so Mary Ann kind of facilitates the discussion. So as Alex mentioned, at the end of the presentations, we all send in our personal proposal to Mary Ann, and she starts us with an average across the board for everyone. So that average equals the two hundred thousand that we are proposing to spend. And then in that conversation, it is just a little bit, does anyone have an organization that they think should be funded more? And then we, you know, someone will jump in and say one, and kind of what the presentation, what they remember from their notes, and why they think that should be funded more fully. And then we have to look at the other side and say, okay, now we're, you know, plus five thousand, so we're, we'll need to figure out who to adjust down for that. And so Alex and I actually had kind of a back and forth. There was one where Alex thought should be funded a little less, and one that he thought should be funded a little more. And so I was able to look at the presentation and say, okay, can we take three hundred from this one and give three hundred to that one? And kind of even it out that way. So I think that discussion was about forty-five minutes with the group, so maybe not quite as long as that, that film, but it was pretty civil. But just kind of going back and forth and honest, I think we kind of cultivated an open environment, and Mary Ann definitely did a lot of that as well. But just having that open discussion, and we, you know, raised hands when it was unanimous, and then kind of moved on to the next one.
Great, thank you. And then, Mr. Goff, my, my other question is for you, and you and I talked about this a little bit the other day, but the budget this year is quite a bit higher than it was last year. And can you refresh us? I know we had raised, talked about raising it, but, and then I think you might have gone a little higher or something.
Yeah, it was a hundred and sixty thousand for this year's budget, and Mary Ann and I spoke and talked about the, the amount of requests we received this year and the interest in this program. We, we figured we could just give a flat increase up to two hundred thousand, so a forty thousand dollar increase for, for next year.
Cool. Yeah, I think well worth it this year, so I think it pays off. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rolltine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank you guys for your service. I've presented to your committee as just one of many, and so I know that there are very long sessions, and, and I, I would go back to being just a citizen, just to be on this committee, because I think it's such a great way to get to know our, our community. And even I learn something when I read the packet, so a couple of things stand out to me. One is, I just, I don't think there's anyone in our community who isn't touched by these dollars going out to serve partners, and it's a reminder that we're, we do a lot as a city, but we're only as good as our partnerships. And in some of these are regional partnerships, and we are part of a region, so I really appreciate this, this opportunity for our city and for you guys to make hard decisions. I mean, it's great that we went up to two hundred thousand, but you still had to make a lot of hard decisions. So thank you for bringing thoughtful dialogue to accomplish that. My kind of request, I think, is really more geared at city staff. Can we, when, after council approves these and they're officially being awarded, on our website, we have a list of the organizations from last year and how much, I guess I'm looking at you, Mary Ann, and how much money they received. It would be really great if we could include like links to their websites, and then maybe just a little bit of information, like is summarized in our packet about the organizations. I don't know how many people dive through our website that much, but I think it's a great resource, you know, that those of us in the room here tonight get a, get those little snapshots. But when we get it up on the website, I think the additional information about those partners would be really helpful for people. And I was excited to see new people, new organizations come forward, and like the severe weather shelter network is something that's really important to me. So I was really glad to see that they, they put their, their name in and got well funded, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank this group very much for what you're doing, because this is a good way to see where money's going. I do have a couple of questions, though, eh? The severe weather shelter network, okay, that area, it, it covers, I guess, Wheat Ridge and Arvada for the northern area. I don't remember us having any place in Wheat Ridge like last year, did we?
We didn't last year. We did for partial, part of the year, Healing Waters here on Twenty-Ninth Avenue, but that didn't work for them very well. This year, they have already acquired the Glory of God Church on Forty-Fourth Avenue. It's going to be the Wheat Ridge location this year, for, for northern Jefferson County, actually.
And then also about the, okay, let me find where that is. The Rising Mission in Arvada? I thought I understood that they needed to move or something. Did you hear anything about that?
So the Mission Arvada is an incredible resource for those experiencing homelessness, and as we know, Wheat Ridge doesn't have a whole lot of resources in the city that actually provide for that. Yes, they did mention that Arvada is currently having issues with their locations, since they're in the downtown area, specifically across from the library, and they do happen to have a lot of their clientele that wait around the area, went during their closing hours, waiting for them to open again. They didn't disclose exactly where those conversations are, but that was a big reason that they did request as much money as they did, is because they're looking for partners outside of Arvada to help them provide the necessary resources that they do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, a couple of items. I want to thank you both of you for coming tonight and a great presentation. Thanks to all of your committee members and the great work you do. This is sometimes the type of a project that while it feels really good to do it, sometimes you want to say, no, no, not be to have to make these decisions. So thank you very much. I was, I was really pleased that you, that you added the, the severe shelter network. I think they do great work. I've, I've visited their facilities, and I'm really happy that you took that on. Another one that I'm really happy that showed up on the list is the Wheat Ridge High School instrumental band boosters. They had some press this year that indicated they were, they were sort of threadbare in their uniforms, and they were looking for money, and I see that we're, we're funding their instrument repair, and so I hope they got some new threads or are working on that. Do you have a, any sort of update or report that you could give us on, on their activities?
So their presentation was very moving. I am very attached to the arts, and I think that is something that definitely needs to be able to be funded within our school system. It always seems to be the first on the cutting block. They were asking for money specifically for the instruments. They have a lot of instruments that need repair and need upkeep, and we were hoping to be able to provide some of that. We unfortunately couldn't provide all that they were asking for, but we figured a little bit would go a long way in order to be able to provide students with more instruments to be able to focus on their love and their dreams.
All right. Excellent, because I don't know, maybe Counselor Dozeman knows whether or not they're, they're, are they part of our festival parade?
Yes, they are going to be.
Excellent. So we'll, we'll be looking for some good tunes coming out of them, so, all right. Thank you very much. Any other, any other questions or comments for our guests tonight? Counselor Ohm.
Just a big thank you to the committee. It looks like a lot of work, but a lot of fun, and we, we do appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, well, that will wrap it up. We will take these back. What's our, we're going to bring a recommendation?
Yeah, it's just get, ask for consensus this evening to include this in the two thousand and twenty-four budget, which we'll be bringing forward to city council here very soon.
Okay, do we have a recommendation to, on a consensus for that? Looks like we do. All right, thank you so much. Okay, we will go to agenda item number two. This is the sales tax extension follow-up survey results. Mr. Goff?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Alex is getting the presentation set up here. As you all know, we're, we're still in the, the information gathering stage for a potential ballot question this November to extend the city's temporary sales tax for another amount of time and for a certain amount of money for certain projects. As you know, we had one survey already earlier this year, and then also our resident survey, which both asked questions on, about the survey, and we did receive really positive support on both of those surveys. We did follow up with the follow-up survey that was conducted between June twenty-sixth and July seventh by Magellan Strategies, who are here this evening to present those results. I think we're all ready. Nate Eckloff is also here, who is our bond counsel, or underwriter, if you have any questions for him. But we, we're hoping to get some consensus tonight if we should move forward with finalizing actual ballot language to bring forward back to city council to be approved by resolution in the near future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan, and he'll present the results of our recent survey.
Thank you all, and thank you, thank you for your time tonight. As we mentioned, this is, actually, this is the wrong presentation. This is the March presentation.
Oh, no!
I just noticed that.
I'm so sorry.
No, that's all right. Hopefully, we'll figure that out eventually.
Hold, please.
Do you have it readily available?
Yes. My guess is I just, I, I put it in the SharePoint today. There we go. Sorry, everybody. No, that's the one I just put in there. It's the same one. That's what I had in that email. This was entirely my fault. Sorry. Thank you, Counselor Hutchinson.
We, we can do a little summary, more background while you're trying to pull that up. You still looking for it? So as you remember, the first survey that Magellan Strategies conducted for is between March ninth and March twenty-third, was, was fairly specific on, on the list of projects that we all talked about at your council retreat back in January. Those projects included the recreation center expansion, sidewalks and street improvements along Thirty-Eighth Avenue, wider sidewalks along Forty-Fourth, improvements on Forty-Fourth Avenue, sidewalks along Young Field, sidewalks and bike lanes on Thirty-Second between Kipling and Wadsworth, sidewalk gap improvements across the city, and drainage and floodway, flood improvements throughout the city. That survey, when we asked if, if this question was on a ballot in November, if voters would support that, total yes, either definitely or probably yes, sixty-eight percent said they would support funding all of those projects for a period of ten to twenty years, which would generate forty-five to seventy-five million. We didn't ask in that question a specific year. But then we asked also a question, how comfortable would you be extending the current sales tax? And we asked for ten, fifteen, or twenty, or not to extend at all. Ten years received twenty-seven percent, fifteen years oddly received thirteen percent, and twenty years received thirty-two percent. So that survey twenty-year timeframe was the largest support. Nineteen percent did not want to extend the, the sales tax. I think that's pretty typical in most surveys that we do. There's always about a twenty percent level that says no to everything, so I don't think that was a big surprise. Nine percent was unsure, were unsure in that survey.
We're there.
You got it?
Yep.
Don't worry.
Good, all right. So that was the first survey. This, this will be, this is the results of the second.
Great, so yeah, as we said, we're talking about a follow-up survey here. There we go. So we interviewed nine hundred and sixty-seven residents from June twenty-sixth through July seventh, and over there on the left side, you kind of see the, the text message that we sent to voters explaining that this is a follow-up survey where the city is seeking additional feedback from the March survey, just in case there was any confusion there. And just letting you know, it's a much shorter survey, it takes about five minutes to complete. So with that nine hundred and sixty-seven interviews, we're looking at a three point oh nine percent margin of error, and importantly, these are weighted to be representative of the odd-year voting demographics in Wheat Ridge, which we'll remind ourselves of here in a couple of slides. We always include a council district map, just in case anyone who's reviewing the survey results is not familiar with the council districts. And here's that other, the slide I mentioned about the expected turnout demographics for an odd-year election. You see the red box there around two thousand and twenty-one, that being the, the last comparable election to what we expect this year. You see, obviously, where you really see the major differences is among the age group right here in this section, where when you're looking at a presidential election like next year would be, you're talking about roughly a quarter of the vote being voters aged eighteen to thirty-four, whereas in an odd election year like two thousand and twenty-one or two thousand and twenty-three, it's, it's about half that, it's about thirteen percent. And there's a corresponding increase, obviously, here in older voters. And that's not something that's unique at all to Wheat Ridge. That's very common demographic changes that you see up and, up and down the front range and really throughout the country. When, when it's a lower turnout election, you're generally looking at an older electorate. Then we wanted to provide, just again, some similar context to what we had provided in the first survey, simply the idea that the city has not made decisions and that the responses from the survey will help inform those decisions. And so we introduced the idea, for those who weren't familiar, of the two thousand and sixteen temporary one-half of one cent, a point-five percent sales tax rate that was used for these specific things, and that council is considering a ballot measure that would ask voters to approve an extension to fund additional projects. And so importantly, the difference between what we did in the first survey, as, as Patrick was describing, where we were a little bit more specific in listing out different projects and what their costs would be, here, we wanted to test a simple ballot question where it's a little bit more generic. Shall the city of Wheat Ridge point-five percent sales tax rate increase be extended for twenty years? So important to note that we are testing the twenty-year timeframe here in this ballot language to raise approximately seventy-five million, so that they have some idea of, of what ballpark we're looking at here for the following projects. And then we're, we're more categorizing than being very specific here, sidewalk. And we had actually two different versions. I'll show you here in the next few slides, one that mentioned bike lanes and one that did not. So sidewalk, bike lane, and street improvements on these primary street corridors, filling sidewalk gaps throughout the city, emphasis obviously on major pedestrian corridors and routes to schools, and then the drainage and floodplain infrastructure improvements throughout the city, which we found in the first survey. the city, which we found in the first survey was, was something that a lot of voters responded to. And here's what the ballot test looks like. This is the one with bike lanes. So again, that same ballot language that I just read, the, the blue is those who would vote yes, the orange shades are those who would vote no. And so you see overwhelming support, nearly half of voters would definitely vote yes. They're 46%. And another third of voters would probably vote yes. So if you recall back to the first survey, we had about 68, I think, percent support for the combination of all the different items that we listed. So you see here, you know, when we're a little bit more generic and also when we've dropped some of those things from the first survey, you see an increase of about 10% support. And you see it's really across the board. There's, there's no demographic group where support is, is anywhere near below 50%. And importantly, I think when you look at the, kind of the alternate version of the survey that did not mention bike lanes in that first bullet point, there's no statistical difference in, in the data whatsoever. You're still looking at 78% would vote yes, 16% would vote no. And again, no real differences across the different demographic groups. Then we asked the same question, exact same question that we had asked in the first survey, how long would you feel comfortable extending the one-half one-cent sales tax rate to fund priority projects throughout the city? And here you see roughly a third said 10 years, roughly a third said 20 years. Again, that, that 16% that, that we mentioned, those are, those are your no voters. If you, you know, think back up here, oh, there's that 16%. There's a 17% there. So tho- those folks say they don't want to extend the sales tax and that's, that's not surprising. That's, those are the ones that answered no on the questions before. I will point out that, you know, in this, since we know from testing that we're testing 20 years for 75 million, there's not really any evidence that, that going with 10 years would cause those 34% of voters to really, you know, shift their vote from a yes to a no necessarily. It's just maybe they, for whatever reason, have a preference for that smaller timeframe, in which case they would, they would want to be asked again in 10 years. Whereas a very similar size group, the 33% says, let's look at 20 years, let's look at 75 million, understanding that that 75 million equates to more work getting done, right? So, and, and from the first survey, we did see a slightly higher, when, when you compare the two, we saw a slightly higher measurement for the 20-year timeframe. And here are the survey demographics, just for those who are curious to how the survey is weighted, where we can weight it. You see age range there, gender, and here is party affiliation weighted by council district. Tenure, tenure in Wheat Ridge is, is obviously always kind of an interesting one. I, I feel like we got a pretty good mix of, of the newer residents and then the 35% there who have lived in the city for more than 20 years. And with that, I will take any questions that you all have.
Ryan, thank you very much for that presentation. We'll go to questions. Don't all raise your hand at the same time. Council Hulting?
Thanks. I'll just start with, I'm just curious why you A B tested the bike lanes.
That was a specific request from staff.
Did you do it, just so I would ask?
I knew you'd ask that question. We, we, we thought, believe it or not, Ms. Hulting, some people are against bike lanes. Maybe not against them, but I think, I think they, they can be a little controversial and we just wanted to test that. If, if we were promoting bike lanes on all corridors, would that throw some people off? And obviously it didn't. So I think that was great news.
Interestingly, District 2 was like the least enthusiastic about some of this stuff. So Scott, we got work to do. I think the only other thing that stood out to me kind of in the first part of this conversation is on, especially like on the sidewalk gaps, there are a couple of times where throughout the city was used as language. And I'm just a little concerned, you know, people are, we're all narcissists at the end of the day. And so I'm a little concerned about what people might think throughout the city means. So just want to, you know, I know we want to be both as broad as possible to be flexible. But as, as this moves forward, just being a little bit more specific so people aren't confused about like throughout the city, especially on the sidewalk gaps, that we're pretty clear on what we're looking at there. So they don't think it's like putting sidewalks on their residential street.
That would probably be pretty easy, just to, yeah, on that one specifically, just remove throughout the city and just say with an emphasis on major pedestrian corridors and routes to schools. Yeah, good point.
Sure. Council Weaver? No? Okay. Other questions? Mayor Protim Stites?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I don't know if it's a question, I just, I think this is really promising. It's pretty exciting to look at. I think looking at the, the ballot language, I think a few of us have been taken aback a little bit over the last, you know, couple of months, looking at, at the, at the survey results. You know, I, I think we all thought maybe the rec center, a bunch of us, I guess, thought the rec center might have been more popular a few months ago and, you know, taking that off makes sense. And I think back in 2016, when this first happened, being more specific about the language and having specific projects was a necessary thing. And I think because that worked out so well, this is able to be a little more generic and that, that gives us a lot more flexibility moving forward. So I think that's great. So I guess I'd love to see us move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Council Hutchinson?
Yeah, I was noticing the online survey of 967 people. That's 3% of the population here in Wheat Ridge. So we're going to make decisions on a survey of 3% of the people. I mean, that's not very many. And then also I see a difference between funding this for 10 years versus 20. 10 years was, they were not wanting to go beyond that. That was 34% of the people. That's more than 33. So it's just not a blanket thing that everybody's going to want to go 20, 20 years, you know? I mean, here's the survey, that's the results, and the city wants to go 20 years. And I have another question about the items that would be on the ballot, listing them like four things together or whatever. We compare ourselves with other cities all the time. What other city does that instead of identifying each item separately for people to be able to vote on instead of it all together?
You, you mean having separate ballot questions for separate projects?
Because I've heard from people, even at the last election, when the four items were together, you know? Some people just said, I'm not voting for that because I want this, but I don't want this other thing. And so it's kind of a given. Then if you vote yes, then it's everything, but maybe that's not what everybody wants, you know? So I don't, I think it is tactic.
It can be, yeah. Cities do it both ways. You're right. I think in our case though, Ms. Hutchinson, if you remember the, the question, the question we tested, 78% said they would support that going for 20 years with that package of projects. So obviously you're not going to please everybody, but that's why we're testing this. And we did several surveys and you kind of have to go with the results. And I, I don't know, maybe Ryan could speak to the 3%. It's, it's, it's not, it's, these are statistically significant surveys. That means something. That doesn't mean you're only getting the opinion of 3% of your population. If it's done correctly and, and individuals are randomly selected and it's weighted, you can generalize those results over the entire population of your community. So that means if you go out and talk to everybody, and if we go out and talk to all 32,000 residents, the results would be the same within that margin of error.
Yeah, yeah. That, that's exactly what I was going to say. And that's why I kind of backed up to this demographic slide, right? So I mean, I, I think the, the first thing to kind of remember is that for this, since we're looking at a ballot measure survey, so we're looking at likely voters, that's how it's weighted. So the, the interested population for a likely November election turnout is that 9,600 number, right? So that, that's just one thing that I'll point out is that we know that not all 26,000 roughly registered voters are going to vote in November. So when it, when it comes to accurately measuring support for a ballot measure in an odd year, those 9,600, that, that likely voting universe is, is the universe that is, is relevant for our survey. But yeah, to kind of echo Patrick's point, it's, it's, it's not as if we're only getting the, the most active and engaged and involved people and these 967 aren't, aren't representative of the community as a whole. They're weighted so that we can be reasonably certain that they are representative of the community as a whole. So the, the weighting itself is, is really what's most important and being accurate. And, and you'll see, when you look back at 2019 to 2021, these things are remarkably predictable year to year or odd year to odd year. And so that's why we can express confidence that, yeah, within this 3% margin of error that we have here, we can be confident in the results.
And it's interesting to me that most of the people who did this online survey were over 65. So that is not of the new people, all the new people who are moving in. And I don't see that to where moving in now means they're going to be here for 25 years. I mean, I, all around, I mean, the house is being sold in a year or whatever kind of a thing. I think the difference is having the tax between 10 years and 20 years is what a concern is for people.
Yeah, and it, it's a good question, Ms. Hutchinson, and it's something that we need to consider, I think, when we make, you make a decision here. But I'd like, if it's okay, Maria, to speak a little bit about the cost as we were directed by council after the last survey was to look a little bit harder at the actual cost of these projects. And Maria, are you, you ready to speak to that a little bit? And, and you'll see that the costs are a little bit higher than we expected. And that's one reason we, we took the rec center out, because that was a huge number. So I think council really needs to determine how much, how much they want to get done. And that really determines how long the tax should be. But Maria?
Yes, thank you. Yes, as, as Patrick mentioned, when we did the retreat, we were, those numbers were generic and kind of a rough estimate at that time. And we wanted to take that and refine that some more. And so this is the results of that. And as you know, we've been in a volatile construction market over the last probably at least four to five years. We likely will continue to see that. And so we want to come with a level of certainty. And instead of saying, oops, you know, the prices have increased significantly, we want to say, okay, here's kind of our boundaries. And then as we develop, develop the programs or the projects further, we can refine those costs to where we're hitting that mark much more closely. Next slide, please. And just to touch briefly, so those, the numbers that you saw were, had a very large range of highs and lows, but that's because, again, we're at the very, very start. So the project is, you know, just barely a twinkle in our eyes and we haven't done a whole lot of work. But we did go through and identify all of the costs. So not just construction, but design, construction management, erosion control, traffic control, all of those things, plus the major items such as curb and gutter, street improvements, lighting, what have you. Then we added a contingency on top of that of 25%. And this gets us to that class five level estimate, which is anywhere from 20 to 30% below the estimate, up to 30 to 50% over the estimate. And just as in the side, all of those projects, the very specific projects that we listed, except for the rec center, included things like street improvements, sidewalks, lighting, bicycle facilities, and improved drainage. So when we talk about those generic items, these projects are hitting on all of those. And then these are the numbers, again, you know, very rough at this point, and really just to help us refine and kind of identify and start to narrow it down as to what we might consider doing. And as Patrick mentioned, we are recommending that the rec center expansion be taken out of that, which probably puts us down more in that, for the estimated total right around $100 million. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council Hutchinson?
I think you should look at the high range. And an example is Wadsworth. We just keep coming back and asking for more money or whatever because of costs. I mean, I just think, start there and then if you have leftover, do another project.
Thank you. Council Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I have some questions for our consultant.
Yeah, Ryan? Mr. Ohm's got some questions for you.
Oh, sure. We'll talk to him.
The, the first question I had was on the, it's going to be the one that shows the percentages of the 10-year and the 20-year?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Just a, a quick question on the, why, why, do you have any hypothesis why the 15-year was so low?
Well, you know, I, I think there's, I, I think it's easy to explain those kind of two groups of people, that the 34% that say 10 years are, are the people that we're just talking about and say, okay, I'd only like to do 10 because I want to have another vote on this in 10 years. If I don't like the way it's going, I want to have a chance to say, no, I'm going to vote no. And then the 20 years is, they see the 75 million and say, well, everything that I want, my wish list is going to get up there, so I want, I want the 75 million. And the 15 years is just kind of in the middle. They're not in one of those two groups. And, and yeah, some people might say, oh, let's split the difference. But it looks like, you know, the vast majority of people aren't thinking that way, right? They're in one of those two groups, the ones that say, let's do 10, let's only get done what we absolutely need to maybe, or the ones who say, let's do 20 because I think we need to do a large list of projects.
So, thank you. So as we, to kind of expand on Councilmember Hutchinson's question about what's in this whole question, my understanding is we're going to have an ask of like, these are all the projects we're going to be doing. Here's, and then the, the second set is kind of like, here's how much money that it's going to be. And then the third set is going to be a timeframe. And that my question is more, if this is so, I mean, it's a 33, 34, is there any issue that, because this will all be in one package, correct, Patrick? It's going to be one package, question?
One question.
Yeah. Is there going to be any decision or indecisiveness of like, well, should I vote on it because I'm good with the first two criteria, but, you know, I'm a 10-year person, then the other person's like, well, I'm a 20-year person and that doesn't do it for me? I'm just throwing it out there. Or should, or should there be a second set of questions that says, because this is so evenly split, that says like, do you vote in favor of 10? Do you vote in favor of 20? You see where I'm going?
Yeah. And, and again, I think that's why we, we just took a chance and threw a sample question out there. That included all those, those metrics, like you said, the half-cent sales tax extended for 20 years for 75 million for this, these projects. And again, that 78% said yes to that. So I think that helps answer that question a bit, in my mind.
Yeah. So I mean, I, I agree. Obviously, for the sample ballot question, you got to make a choice, right? Like you can't have both options on the ballot. It would just create like way too much confusion. So, so we're, we're, we had to make a choice. We went with the larger number just to see, okay, so if it came back and it was under 50% support, it's like, okay, that tells us maybe we do need to go with the lower number. You know, if we did test a lower number, you know, 10 years, so you change that 20 to a 10 and you change the, the 75 million to a 45, do, do I think these numbers would be much different? Probably not. I, I don't think people would vote no if they like 20, but they, they don't like 10. And, and clearly we see that here. All of these folks, the, the blue, orange, and the green are all folks who are voting yes here, right? And so I don't think, you don't lose people, you know, if, if you say 20, you don't lose the 10 people. If you say 10, you don't lose the 20 people. And so that's why the, the determination was made that let's, let's test it at 20, let's test it at that, that longer term, that higher end, and see what support is. And it came back overwhelming.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Weaver?
Thank you, Ryan, for that explanation. I feel really strongly, my, some of you may or may not know, my background is in statistics and asking questions and things like this. And I, I feel like these percentages bode very, very well. And, and I, and I just want to remind everybody, I, my, it would be my vote that we definitely go for the 20 years. And I want to remind everybody that we are, we are not asking for a new ask. We're not upping the sales tax. We are asking to continue something that's already happening. And I think if we really focus on that, these are, these numbers are reflective of, of a, of a strong a strong support for a city that has, has not been able to put a lot of money towards serious infrastructural things that we need to put towards, that, you know, to me, this is like the question of, do you, when we look at our long-term investing portfolio, when do you long-term invest, when do you short-term invest? This, to me, is what Wheat Ridge is going to look and feel like in the next 50 years, quite honestly. Because we are dealing with problems right now of, of issues that were not dealt with 30 and 40 years ago, speaking of some of the major infrastructure that we have to. So, so, it is, it's my opinion that I, I think the survey results, and Ryan, you can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, I feel like this is, bodes very well for the citizens of Wheat Ridge saying, yes, we need to deal with these big infrastructural issues that we have. So, I would support the 20-year, and I would also support really making sure we come back with that language, so that people understand we are not putting a new ask out there, that we are simply continuing something that they are already doing, right? We're, they're already experiencing this tax, so that we don't have the response of, well, no, I don't want this new thing, it's not a new thing. So, that, thanks. That's my opinion.
Yeah, just real quick, I'll say, I, I do think that is, is a pretty big factor in, in such a high level of support, is that it is an extension, not an increase, right? And, and even, even so, you know, the 78, 79% support is, is pretty overwhelming, even in, you know, very similar projects we've done in other communities throughout Colorado for very similar purposes, right? Roads and infrastructure. Typically, in a pre-election poll, you don't see numbers quite this high. But I think it is a reflection, you know, and, and it's nice that this isn't a one-off survey, right? We have the, the first survey that we did in March, but we also had the resident survey that gave us very similar, very similar measurements. But also, I think the resident survey just kind of expressed the, the confidence that people have in the work that's been done since 2016, so that when you're asking them for this increase, they look and say, okay, I've been happy with what was done with that original 0.5%, why not extend it and knock some more stuff off the list? Yeah.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I was just going to ask how you felt about 78%, because when you were here back in March, I think 68%, you seem pretty bullish on, so 78%. And I was just going to ask you to compare it to other cities, and you did all that already. So, that's good. I was talking to the city clerk a few minutes ago before the meeting, and he had a, a question, especially on this timeline. Is this a sales tax question, is this a Tabor?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yes, Tabor question.
So.
Yeah, I laid out a real brief timeline in your memo that would, with the, the most important dates that we need to meet, to meet those requirements.
Excellent. Does that answer your question, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, it does.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Holteem?
Thank you. I'm enjoying the peanuts.
Just when you get started.
I mean, first of all, I love that this is polling so high. If, if we're using success of the current one while we're in the middle of like Wadsworth construction hell. So, we are seeing our tax dollars at work, like in real time. And we don't even know how beautiful that's going to be yet, so. So, my biggest question comes about, you know, obviously, you know, unless everything comes in at the low end, there's going to be some decisions to be made later about what actually gets funded with this. And, you know, I appreciate, having been a civic fangirl for a while in the city, you know, the benefits of some flexibility in ballot language. I'm, I'm just thinking a little bit about, what does this look like once it goes to the ballot? And we're seeing corridors such as, and, and people are, you know, our constituents are pressing to understand, you know, either more clearly what that commitment is, or the process of deciding. And so, you know, obviously, we're not going to be able to do everything, even that's referenced as, as a maybe in there. And so, I have a little bit of concern about how the dialogue that might provoke. And so, I'm just wondering if maybe we need a little bit clearer parameters around it, so that people, you know, have a little bit better idea of what actually will get funded, they just don't know to like what extent those corridors get funded. And I guess I'm just checking with my peers if there's any concern about that. Because if we're referencing Youngs Field and 32nd and 38th and 44th, and we know right now we actually can't do all of those, are we in a situation where we're having to answer hard questions later, or not being able to defend it while it's on the ballot this fall?
Maria, do you want to take a shot at that?
Sure. I think, you know, similar to your earlier question about throughout the city, I think what this will do is allow us some time to hone in, not necessarily before the ballot, but as we go forward, is say, okay, here's the specific gaps that we think we can fill throughout the city. Here's the specific drainage improvements that we can do. We know we can't do everything, but these are the ones we're going to target for this approximate amount of dollars. And as we look at the specific projects, we can either refine those, modify those. Again, we kind of took a very wide brush. If we're able to save right away, or if we're not maybe adding a particular element on one of those projects, then we can save some money. So, I think those will be the ongoing discussions with council, and even feedback from the public, that we can, again, start to narrow that down and more, become more specific.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. One of them I had for Ryan, we, you're showing about, just about 26,000 registered voters, and that's in the 21s, 21 registered, or is that sort of registered today, or?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll explain, I'll explain how we come up with these numbers. So, the registration column is, I, I don't know exactly what the vintage of that was, but it was sometime earlier this year when we, we pulled the list of registered voters. So, the 2021 number is actually those who voted, basically the day after Election Day on 2021. We pulled the voter file and said, okay, those 9,600 people voted. So, do they all still live in Wheat Ridge? No. Are there new people who've moved in who are going to vote? Yes. But you see, we're able to be pretty confident in these demographics, even if some people have moved, some people have moved in. It takes a lot to kind of move these numbers in a way that would significantly affect turnout.
And if we have a population of what, around 22 and a half thou, or 32 and a half thousand? Out of 32 and a half thousand, if we've got 26,000 registered voters, is that, is that a pretty significant percentage? It seems to me like a high percentage of residents that are registered voters.
Sure, oh, absolutely. I, I would say, it's, it's one of the highest on the front range, in terms of just, if the vast majority of your residents are also registered to vote.
Right. Thank you. And then, I had a couple of questions from Maria. Maria, are any of these streets that we're talking about, or avenues, there may be some avenues in there, a state highway?
No, those are all local streets, or city streets.
And just for comparison, Wadsworth Boulevard is a state highway.
That's correct, yeah.
And in your experience, does that, does being a state highway make it significantly more complicated and cost, costly to build improvements?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And, and let me ask you, Wheat Ridge is not paying for 100% of the Wadsworth improvements, are we?
No. We are getting a significant amount of federal dollars, as well as some assistance from the state.
Okay. Would, and, and would you anticipate that the money that we raise as a city, that, that we would only spend our own funds on this, or would we go out to other agencies and try to raise money along with these other dollars?
Yes, excellent point. So, I think, again, as we start to hone in and narrow down our preferred projects, that we would go out and see grant opportunities where we could to leverage our investment with potentially other, either state or federal funds.
And have we been pretty successful in that venture going in the past?
Very much so.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to read that into the record, so. Are there, are there other questions or comments that we want to do on this? I think, yes, Counselor Holteem?
I just have a comment. I do love the clarity with the numbers on the polling, and I think, you know, what we're hearing is that this is the investment that our community wants to see us make in ourselves right now. And I really like that this is a ballot question, as, you know, I've, as soon as we started talking about this, the fact that this is really going to touch just about everybody at the end of their block, or at the end of their street. And so, this is really kind of an everybody's ballot initiative. And I think that it's exciting to be in a position to do this. I, just in the last couple of months, have new neighbors on both sides of me, and both of them are young couples. One of them just had a baby last week, cute little baby Paul, and he's just a little squishy. And, you know, they're, they're already, like, of course, they know I'm their city council person, and like, they are just talking my ears off about things they love, but both of them have said, like, where are the bike lanes, where are the sidewalks? And, and then, a new couple moved in just further down the ridge from us. And again, it's a couple, they're about my age, and they're like, where are the bike lanes? And they don't even know I'm a bikie person. So, I think, you know, to Ms. Hutchinson's point, we do have a lot of people who are coming into the city. And I think these are the kind of investments that, you know, residents today and tomorrow are going to, going to want to see. So, I'm, I'm excited that we're feeling good and strong about this, and I'm, I'm ready for November, bring it on.
Okay. And I wanted to just sort of follow-up comment on, on Counselor Weaver's. These are long-term structural investments and improvements to our city, and they, they make a difference. I remember, you know, that's probably 20 or 30 years ago, when we, when we paved the alleys in, in my part of town, and they had been dirt alleys before that. And, and it just makes a huge amount of difference when you walk out there and you see these, and these are, these are good almost forever, you know, these types of improvements, and we, then we have the basis to, to, to refine those and, and to keep those up to date. But, and we're also moving into, you know, a comprehensive plan, and I think as part of the comprehensive plan, we should, we should concede that we're, that we're going to reinvest in our community. So, Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, I would agree with your comments in, in regard to, these are the very things that local governments should be funding and focusing on, these infrastructure improvements, improvements to sidewalks, streets. And we do hear from a lot of community members about not having sidewalks, and while that did serve our purpose when we were an agricultural city, it doesn't so much now when we're trying to move from one end to the city, or from home to school. So, I appreciate, and obviously, in representing District Four, I would like to see a significant focus on 44th Avenue, considering we've focused on 38th, and we already have bike lanes on 32nd. And given that we've completed the sub, the subarea plan for 44th Avenue, I'd really like to see some investment in that area, and I'm looking forward to supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to see a show of hands for consensus to move this forward to, to the city council for approval. Looks like we have that consensus?
Great. Thank you. Good discussion.
Thank you, Ryan.
Appreciate it. Yeah, I just, I just actually had one point of clarification, just to avoid any confusion. So, here on the, on the age range, so, 40% of respondents was weighted. So, that doesn't mean that 40% of the respondents were over the age of 65, but those who were over the age of 65 was weighted up to, again, match what we expect turnout to be in November. Just, just a point of clarification.
Very good. So, moving forward, we'll, thank you for the consensus, we'll work on that. The next steps are, city clerk will need to notify Jefferson County that we intend to participate in the coordinated election. Of course, we have council elections on there also. August 28th is our last day for city council to approve ballot language, so we'll, we'll work towards that date. We have to enter, well, that same night, we'll have to enter, to enter a government agreement with, with the county to do the coordinated election. September 8th, the city, that's when we have to actually submit the language to Jefferson County. And then, September 25th, as the clerk mentioned, that's when our Tabor notice is due to Jefferson County. So, those are the next steps. Nate Ekloff and his team, they did rerun the numbers to see if the bond market would still generate approximately 75 million over a 20-year period, and they said, yes, it's, it's still in that same range. Just so you know, we are looking at potentially doing two, two different tranches. We'll bring more information back to you on that. So, if, if you remember from the last bond that we did, and because of IRS rules, because these, these dollars are tax exempt, you have to spend them within a three-year period, or at least reasonably say that you can. We don't want to have to do all these projects in a three-year period, so we're looking at maybe doing two different tranches, and actually, the two tranches gets us to the 75 million. If we did one tranche, it's a little bit lower. So, that will give us more time, seven, eight years potentially, if we do it over a couple of different bond issuances, issuances. So, we'll bring that, more information back to you on that. Nate, do you have anything else you want to add, or? Nope?
Nothing else to add, unless there's a question.
Okay.
The market's relatively close to our target at January 15th. It also is slightly less, really close to 75 million. So, we're going to be worried about the, on the basis of that.
Good. Thanks, Nate. That's it.
Okay. Ryan, thank you very much. And that, unless you have something else, we'll conclude item number two.
That's it for number, number two?
Okay. Well, then, that's sort of the action items on our agenda tonight, and let's go to, I'm sure we've got some reports from our city manager, staff reports.
I do, just a couple of updates. So, our police department staff is going to be providing avoid, deny, defend training for city council on August 14th. We would like to do it right before the council meeting. It's, it's, avoid, deny, defend is a strategy developed by law enforcement officials as a proven plan for surviving an active shooter event. Something you don't want to think about, but you're here in the public domain, and it's something that we, we feel we need to do with you, and to provide you with the tools you need in case, unfortunately, there's an incident in here. So, we're hoping, it's only about 30, 45 minutes, maybe? Do you think every, you could all make it at 5:30 on August 14th, or we could, even 5:45, I think, maybe at the latest, we could probably get it done? We could provide dinner, if that would be helpful? You want dinner, too? Okay?
More air chips?
More chi, just, this is.
I think this was a sit-down.
Five in dinner?
Sit-down dinner.
Let, let's plan 5:30 and dinner, and our PD's excited to, to provide that training for you. Some, some good news, exciting news, our Let's Talk Resident Engagement program, I know you're all very proud of, just received the Dr. Cog Metrovision Award. Yeah, very excited about that. I, I always knew that was an award-winning program. Dr. Cog recognizes excellence, innovation, collaboration, and leadership in problem-solving among communities and their partners. There's going to be an award celebration Wednesday, October 4th, at the Seawell Ballroom downtown. So, we'll get more information out to you, and that, we'll have a table, I'm assuming. But tremendous credit, of course, goes to Jeff Hurt and Ashley Holland for that. They did a fabulous job with that. And some more good news, we were just notified from both Senator Bennett's office and Congresswoman Pedersen's office, that our $200,000 funding asked for the local works Clear Creek Makerspace Program, and our $2 million funding asked for our naturally occurring affordable housing program, have both been included in the initial federal appropriations bills. So, that's, that's a huge step, but there's still, one, one big step still Congress has to approve a budget. So, we should hear more by August, September, October, but huge, huge step forward. So, we weren't sure if any one of them were going to make it, actually, so. So, exciting. That's it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Elected officials' reports, anyone have a report? Mayor Protim Stites?
Just a quick one tonight, Mr. Mayor. This Wednesday at Esther's, from 5 to 8 o'clock, is the Weaver's Business Association's 20th anniversary. So, I'm pretty excited about that. My grandfather was one of the charter men, members of the business association back then. And I remember when I opened my business 15 years ago, or something like that, they took me to my first business association meeting and introduced me to Loretta and Margie and everybody, and, and it's, it's been great ever since. So, I'm excited to cut the ribbon to hopefully get them kicked off for another 20 years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holteem?
Thank you. I've got the Happiness Gardens report. Happiness Gardens actually was one of the stops on the garden tour this last Saturday, and it was looking fabulous. Again, you should go visit if you haven't. The eggplants are starting to show up, and the sunflowers are incredibly tall, and there's been a lot of collaborative weeding going on, so it's very well-tended. And it's just really fun, there's a lot of great demonstration gardens. So, if you want to be inspired, go stop by Happiness Gardens. And then, I just wanted to just give a shout-out to the swimming pools. I believe that the rec center swimming pool is now open again, so we have enough lifeguards on staff. And so, as a swimmer, I'm glad to see we're, we're swimmie. And I think we hosted the, the Foothills Swimming Association Championship this weekend. So, we're a beautiful garden town and a very swimmie town. So we're a beautiful garden town and a very swimmy town, two things I really like about Wheat Ridge.
Very good. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. So I had the opportunity to volunteer at the Wheat Ridge Garden Tour, and it was really great. I actually was at former council member Karen Berry's home. She has a very gorgeous garden, and there was great participation and turnout, and I really wanted to give a shout out to the Grange, Dominic Breton, and Catherine Williams for helping to organize that and ensure that all of the stops were coordinated and, you know, booked with volunteers and questions answered, so a really great event. And Wheat Ridge, I didn't manage to get to all of the gardens, but I know that they're beautiful and heard wonderful things, so I just wanted to give a shout out to them.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
If any of you would like to go visit goats, they are Lewis Meadows, another, the other side of the park and rec spectrum that we were just talking about, they are eating and mowing the green space there, and they, the grass is so tall that you can't see the goats, but if you call out any of their names, you'll see their heads pop up and they'll, they'll come trotting over to you. So their names are Willie, Arlo, Simon, and Garfunkel. Sorry.
And how are your babies doing?
And the three baby goats that were born, triplets, last week are very, very cute and bouncing around.
They're good kids, right?
Ah!
Sorry. It's part of the farmer humor. All right. Anything else we should, Stephen?
Thank you. I have an advertisement from the Cultural Commission through my wife, who is a member of the Cultural Commission. The art drop began this past weekend and continues until the weekend just before the coronation festival. The way that works is artists are asked to donate a piece of art, which the commission pays them for up to $100. And then members of the commission go and hide framed certificates in parks and other public places. Hits are published, where you can find these certificates on our Facebook page, and people find the certificate, and then they go to a local business to pick up their piece of art, and hopefully, if they can find art they like in Wheat Ridge, they buy it in Wheat Ridge. So let people know that that's going to go on for the, at least the next two weekends. I've lost track of, they got so many donations from artists that they're able to expand the number. So if you enjoy art, check the Facebook page, you might find something very interesting.
And we have a very active arts community in our city. Counselor Hulteen.
That reminded me, the piece of art at Clear Creek Crossing has been put up, it's gigantic, it's huge, you can see it from the interstate, but I had a chance to go, I rode my bike over there, and it's phenomenal. It's still fenced off, but it's just really, really, really cool piece of art, so I love that, that the city selected that, and it's a local artist, and I hope you guys all have a chance to go see it.
Anything else? All right. We will be back at a regular meeting here, one week from tonight at 6:30, and if there's no more business tonight, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.